First, 2021 to order. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
I'm here, I'm in Cadillac, up in my office.
Ellen Boss. Ingalls.
Here from Cadillac.
King.
I am here attending in Cadillac.
Mayor Falcons.
I am here and attending in the city of Cadillac. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the first public comment. We do ask if anyone has any comments, that they do keep their comments to three minutes or less, and provide your name for the clerk.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes.
Could we get a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
Yes, we can, I apologize. So we'll go back to the approval of the agenda, would someone entertain a motion, please?
This is Councilmember King, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Shippers, support. Councilmember Ellen Boss. Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. We'll step back to the public comment. Mike, do you see anyone?
I do not see anyone raising their hand.
Okay.
Mr. Ellen Boss is coming in.
His chair made it.
You guys don't see Brian, I see him sitting right there, what are you talking about?
Come on, it's been a long day, Steve.
He shrunk.
Is there water in your glass?
Oh, he put on his Vikings jersey, that's what he was doing.
He was getting dressed, that's why he was here. Okay, good, I'm glad to see you. All right, at this point in time, we'll go to the approval of the consent agenda.
This is King, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Shippers, support. Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
I see a thumbs up. Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, after our football team made history a couple of weeks ago, I wanted to present the team with a proclamation. It was difficult, obviously, to have the team come in this evening for this, but we are going to present a copy of this proclamation to each one of the team members and coaching staff. So I'll go ahead and share it at this time. The proclamation is for the Cadillac Vikings Football Team, number 125. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry of the 2020 Cadillac High School Vikings Football Team has enabled these student athletes to appear in a state championship football game. Given that 1895 was the first year of existence for the Cadillac program, 125 years later, team number 125, the team of 2020, is the first team to ever do so. Whereas winning this year's district championship and its first ever regional championship with their victory over Forest Hills Eastern led them to a victory over the number one ranked team in the state, Edwardsburg High School, earning their way to the state final. Whereas Cody Mallory, Cadillac's head football coach, and his entire coaching staff have been instrumental in guiding this team to uncharted territory. Team member parents, faculty, the marching band, cheerleaders, and student body at Cadillac High School were integral in guiding the team to this historic football season through their unwavering support. Therefore, I, Carla J. Falcons, mayor of the city of Cadillac, along with the entire city council and city staff, on this first day of February 2021, hereby encourage all citizens of Cadillac and its greater community to join in recognizing and heartily congratulating the 2020 Cadillac High School Vikings Football Team for their tremendous achievement. Okay. All right, at this time, we do have a FOIA appeal on the agenda this evening, and so I'm going to turn this to Marcus to introduce this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We have another appeal on our agenda this evening, similar to the process that we went through at your last meeting. The first step will provide an opportunity for legal to summarize the appeal, followed by an opportunity for the appellant to provide any information that he or she would like to, followed by board discussion, council discussion, along with then a motion. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mike, or Mike unless you're going to turn it over to Ann, to summarize where we're at.
Yeah, I will let Ann comment on the FOIA appeal.
Oh, thank you. You all, I think, I believe you all received a copy of the memo that I sent to you with the background on the appeal. This appeal was for basically four different sets of information, they're listed, one through four. All information relating to a case number and the dash cam footage related to that case. Full mailing address, phone number, and emails of officers involved, body camera footage involving that incident, and medical reports by state officials. The city granted that request in part and denied that request in part, and it resulted in this appeal. I want, just to clarify to the council, that the appeal only involves number one and number three, number two and number four were not appealed. Primarily because we granted the information of number two and then did not have the information for number four. As a preliminary matter, one of the reasons this was a difficult FOIA to respond to is that there's some information that was requested, namely body cam footage. There's a new law, relatively new law, enacted by the legislature to protect body cam footage taken in a private place in someone's home. Only select individuals are allowed access to that, one of them being the person that is the subject of the footage. Although Mr. Bowdre sent the FOIA request, some of the information on his FOIA request was confusing, and I outlined that in paragraph one of that memo, and then we also explained that to Mr. Bowdre, that we just didn't feel comfortable releasing it to him because the cell phone number, for example, on his FOIA request didn't match the cell phone number in the report, and also that the email address that was provided was actually in the name of somebody else that appeared. So in order for us to be comfortable releasing that, you know, highly confidential information, we asked him to come to the police department and provide some identification, and he did subsequently do that after he received the city's response. So the basis for his appeal really is twofold. One, that he appealed, number one, when someone asks for all information relating to something, our typical initial response is, that's a very broad request, and so we typically say, look, we're going to give you the information that we have, and explain to them that, you know, it's denied because that's too broad, but granted in part to the extent that we can find the information that we find it. So now that we know Mr. Bowdre's identity, we have granted that in part, we'll give him the documents that he's asked for, that the city has. Some of that information, though, is still confidential, must be redacted, information that's subject to the Crime Victims Rights Act, for example, must be redacted from those reports, so it's granted in part and denied in part. Same with the body cam footage, he requested and appealed the city's denial of the body cam footage. Now that we know who he is, and he has verified that he's the one that requested it, we are going to go ahead and turn over the body cam footage. Again, the statute that regulates body cam footage says that we still have to redact information that's exempt under the act, and that's namely anything that involves the victim, so we still have to go through that information and redact out information and visual representations, for example, about any of the victims on that body cam footage. So we prepared a proposed response that basically grants in part and denies the part of the appeal as outlined, as I outlined here. I'll entertain any questions that you may have about that.
And since you're doing that and getting that to the requester, does it require any action on our part until he appeals what's denied in this next part?
No, actually, he, instead of, you know, I guess, there's two options that he could have had, one is to formally appeal, which he did, the other one would have gone back to say, look, now that I've given you my identification, will you sort of change your mind about the response? Because he actually went through the formal appeal procedure, we have to go through and have a city council act on that appeal.
Okay, if the city council doesn't have any questions, at this time, I would like to give Mr. Bowdre the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, my first question would be how, what law says that you can dictate which part of the Freedom of Information Act that I would be appealing?
I guess.
Because in the very first few sentences that you said, you said only sections one and three would be what I was appealing.
You, when you sent your appeal letter, your email, you only appealed the city's denial of your all information relating to the case number 220084 and the body cam. You didn't mention the mailing addresses, phone numbers, and emails of the officers involved, I suspect because the city granted that. You also didn't appeal that part of the request for the medical report made by state officials.
Okay, that's fine. And then I'm also, I'm sure that you're aware of 78314, section A, which does require that you give me that information, as well as let the Shefogen Area Schools, correct?
I, I don't, what information, I don't understand the.
The information, as in the body camera footage relating to the incident.
We're giving you the body camera footage, we're taking out, it's right in the statute that you cited in your appeal, but we're taking out information that is exempt from disclosure under the Crime Victims Rights Act.
Okay, that's fine. Sounds good to me, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other questions or discussion? Tia, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. So thanks for noticing I looked confused. What is it that we need to do if this is being rectified outside of us?
It's actually not, you are still required to act on it. It sounds like Mr. Bowdre is going to be satisfied ostensibly with your decision here, but what my recommendation would be, would be for the council to grant in part and deny in part Mr. Bowdre's appeal, as more specifically stated in the draft letter, because the draft letter gives you all the reasons we're granting it in part and denying it in part.
This is Councilmember King, I'd go ahead and make the motion to adopt the recommendation of our legal counsel to adopt or to grant in part and deny in part, as was outlined in the letter, to be provided to the appellant. This is Councilmember Ingalls, I support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Boss.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is, we have a couple of communications.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of the Lake Street parking lot from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on February 13, 2021, for the ice fishing competition.
Would someone like to make the motion, please?
I'm unmuted. This is Councilmember Shippers. I will make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street parking lot from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on February 13, 2021, for the ice fishing competition.
This is King, I'll support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Boss.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. And Marcus, you'll be introducing the next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item under Communications is our presentation of our fiscal year 2020 audit results by Joe Berlin of Gabridge and Company. Just for reference, the full copy of the comprehensive annual fiscal report dated June 30th of 2020 is available on our website. It's under the Finance Department and under, it's part of the fiscal transparency component that we have. So it's all available, and I believe Owen Roberts, our Director of Finance, is going to also do some screen sharing as well, while Mr. Berlin is going through the presentation. Joe, it's all yours.
All right, good evening. I would like to thank the city for allowing us to serve as your audit firm. I will, okay, it was a, it was a pleasure working with the city staff this year, I know. It certainly was a bit of a challenge going through the audit cycle without being onsite, or at least having very limited and restricted time onsite with the city, and we certainly appreciate all the extra effort that the city put into this audit to make sure that it went successfully. There was a lot of additional email exchange, a lot more scanning, uploading, and exchange of information electronically compared to a typical audit cycle, and we certainly hope to get back to normal in the upcoming year. As usual, it was a very clean audit process, we were able to get to the point where we provided a clean opinion on the financial statements. Before I get to the opinion page, if we go to page 11 of the PDF.
Joe, what number does it have on the bottom?
It's page one.
Oh, okay, because I actually renumbered them to match the actual numbers on the page, so.
Okay, all right. So here on, this is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is the 35th, this 2019 was the 35th consecutive year that the city received this award, and 2020 will be the 36th consecutive year that the city receives this award. What this demonstrates is the city's commitment to excellence in terms of financial reporting. The city went above and beyond. It's voluntary, every local unit in the state of Michigan is required to have its financial statements audited, at least any local unit the size of Cadillac is required to be audited. But in addition to that, the city provides an introductory letter, which has some demographic information, talks about some of the significant accomplishments that the city has had during the previous year, what's coming down the pipeline, and then there's about 25 pages of statistical information that shows 10-year trend information in the very back end of the audit report. So in addition to going through the entire audit cycle, the city goes through, publishes all that information, and really the goal is to provide more transparency, more information to the public, so that you guys, so that the public has a better understanding of what some of the city's major accomplishments were, and what, again, is coming down the pipeline. Again, it's just a commitment to show an, a heightened awareness, commitment to transparency. It certainly is a way of showing that the city's going above and beyond what its reporting requirements are, and definitely kudos to all the staff for putting the extra time together to make this happen. Roughly 75 local units in the state of Michigan, out of 2,500, received this award, so a very small percentage put forth this extra effort, and I think it's worth pointing that out to readers of the financial statements. It certainly means something, and it's not something that we see very commonly. If we skip ahead now, it would be page eight, I'm sorry, page five of the, the actual audit report, no, let me see. Page six, I'm sorry. Okay, so page six, no, it was page five, I'll get this right, I apologize. Page five, the very top paragraph has the opinion that we provided on the financial statements of the city. And like I said, it was a very smooth process, we were able to verify the revenues, the expenditures, the assets, liabilities of the city, and accordingly, we provided a clean opinion on the financial statements. The very top paragraph, just to recap, we wrote, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all mature respects the financial position of the city as of June 30, 2020." According to the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, this is an unmodified opinion. I more commonly explain it as being a clean opinion on the financial statements. This is the gold standard, the highest level of an opinion that we can provide on financial statements. And again, it just means that we were able to work with financial institutions, we worked with Treasury, we worked with the county, we verified, confirmed, and got to the point where we were comfortable rendering an opinion that states that the financial statements are fairly presented, and should always be the city's goal to receive a clean opinion on the financial statements, but it definitely means something to achieve it. This is the most important paragraph in the 184-page report, this is what matters more than anything else. I'm not going to go through all 184 pages, I hope it doesn't disappoint anybody, I'm going to go through and just cover some of the financial highlights, but if at any point in time there are questions, I'm happy to take them. If we go now to page eight of the report, this brings us into the first page of the Management Discussion and Analysis, and here we, in the Management Discussion and Analysis section, we get some financial highlights, we can see two-year comparative information to get just a quick snapshot of what some of the recent trends in the city's finances are, and we also get some narrative, and the narrative explains reasons for some of the significant changes in the financial statements for the past couple of years, and it also explains how all these different financial statements articulate with each other throughout the entire audit report. So just a really good snapshot, roughly 10 pages of information, if you were looking to condense the report into 10 pages, this would be where you'd want to go. And so looking at these financial highlights, that first bullet point shows that the assets exceeded liabilities by $31,339,437. It was referred to as net position, in the corporate world, we would call that equity. It's a theoretical number. Theoretically, if the city sold all of its assets and paid all of its liabilities, there'd be $31 million left over, but that includes infrastructure, streets, buildings, things that aren't necessarily spendable for that reason, it's a hypothetical number. But we do like to see that number trending up over a period of time, and as we continue through that first bullet point, we see that the total net position actually decreased by $473,652. In the corporate world, we would call that a net loss, we'd like to see, we'd like to see net position increasing. As you continue on through that same bullet point, we can see that the prior year, June 30, 2019, did have an increase in net position of $828,486. So if we look back over the past 24 months, the city's doing fine, and the reason for the decrease in 2020 primarily has to do with the pandemic. There was a significant decrease in charges for services, primarily from the business type funds, just with business shutdowns, there was less demand, less usage of water and sewer, with pretty much the expenses remaining flat, and for that reason, the city experienced a loss in revenues, which led to a decrease in net position. Second bullet point down, now we're looking at the city's funds. So the top bullet point is very much long-term, we're talking long-term assets, long-term liabilities. Second bullet point, we're talking about the funds, what are the immediate resources of the city? And here, the governmental funds show total fund balance of $7,243,276, and because the funds are short-term focused, there was actually an increase in fund balance of $127,430. In other words, cash in theoretically exceeded cash out by about $127,000 during the year. And then more importantly, the general fund had an increase in fund balance of $322,184. So the general fund did well, all the funds of the city did well, when we look at them, they did show a $127,000 increase. So when we look at how much cash came in during 2020 compared to cash out, we seen the increase in fund balance, which is certainly a good sign, especially in the midst of a pandemic, which the city certainly was at June 30, 2020. The third bullet point shows that the city continues to set aside 15% of the general fund expenditures and transfers out in a designation referred to as assigned fund balance for future working capital reserve. Again, just a matter of being fiscally prudent to set aside and earmark resources, make sure that you've got enough available to cover the day-to-day cost of running the city. The next bullet point down shows that the unassigned fund balance was, sorry, total fund balance was $3.7 million, and of that total fund balance in the general fund, the unassigned fund balance came in at $2259,269. If we take that $2.26 million and divide it by the annualized expenditures and transfers out of the city, you guys are at 31.5% funded. So in addition to having a 15% reserve for working capital, there's another 31.5% sitting in the city's unassigned fund balance in your general fund. That's the most important classification of fund balance in the city's most important fund, and the Government Finance Officers Association recommends having at least two months in reserves, which is about 17%. Most of our cities range anywhere from 25% to 50%. You guys are right where you need to be, not too much, not too little, not only do you have the 15%, the working capital reserve, you've got another 31.5% sitting in your unassigned fund balance. So even with the challenges of the pandemic, very stable, and it gives you guys the flexibility to be able to deal. It would be nice to think that the pandemic was over at June 30, 2020, but the fact of the matter is, we don't know what's going to happen to state aid. There's some uncertainty with future revenues, it's nice to know that you guys have enough of a buffer sitting in your fund balance to be able to weather those storms in the future as well. And then that last bullet point simply shows that the city continues to make its annual required debt service payments and pay down another $725,300 of long-term debt. If we skip ahead now to page 13 of the financial statements. Really, the one thing that I wanted to point out here is in the upper right-hand corner, the very top row, in 2019, we can see charges for services came in at $6.6 million, it's rounded to the nearest thousand, compared to 2020, which saw a decrease in charges for services all the way down to $5.5 million. And again, the biggest reason for that was coming from business-type activities, just decreased usage of water and sewer, primarily because of business restrictions during 2020, had a very significant impact on the city's total revenues, and that's certainly the primary reason for the overall decrease in that position. Skipping ahead now to page 24, we get a look at the fund financial statements for the city. These are the governmental funds, so the general fund and major streets are both deemed to be major funds of the city, all of the other funds are aggregated into one column, they don't meet the Governmental Accounting Standards Board of being separately presented on these financial statements, so they get lumped together in one column. What I did want to point out here, like I mentioned before, the general fund, three rows up from the bottom, you can see there was an increase in fund balance of $322,184. And then if you go to the very last column, total governmental funds, when we aggregate everything together, three rows up from the bottom, we can see altogether, well, $127,430. we can see altogether about one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-dollar increase in total fund balance across all of the city funds. Certainly, the biggest reason or the biggest driver was the general fund having a good year. All the other funds had a decrease in fund balance. But then again, the fund balance is there to be spent down over a period of time. So a lot of that had to do with capital outlay in in investments, reinvestment of of fund balance into long-term assets of of the city during two thousand twenty. If we skip ahead now to page twenty-seven. Here we get a look, I mentioned before, the water and sewer funds had a decrease in in charges for services during the year. This is basically showing revenues and expenses for the for the business-type funds. If you look, three rows over, total enterprise funds, third column over, three rows up from the bottom, we see the decrease in net position across all the business-type funds of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. In that very first column, three rows up, we see the change in net position was a decrease in the water and sewer fund of two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Now, the same rates that the city had in place during two thousand nineteen led to an increase in in net position in the water and sewer fund. There simply was less usage during the course of the year, leading to that decrease in net position. And I think the most coincidental number in in these financial statements is that very last column, the internal service funds, three rows up from the bottom. The change in that position was a three-dollar decrease. So that's about as close as you can get to breaking even as you can get. I I don't know that I've ever seen it quite that close before in any of our audits. The goal of an internal service fund is to break even over time. You guys, you guys nailed it, a three-dollar decrease in that position. So I thought I would point that out. If we go to the very next page, page twenty-eight. This is the statement of cash flows for the for the business-type funds, primarily water and sewer fund. I I did want to point out that if you look at the fourth row down, very first column, the water and sewer fund had an increase in cash flows from operating activities of nine hundred and nine thousand and eighteen dollars. So just the day-to-day cost of running the water and sewer fund compared to the charges for services to to the residents and in businesses on the system led to an increase in cash flows of nine hundred and nine thousand and eighteen dollars. Now, we know that that has to be used to pay down debt service and to redo the infrastructure, things of of that nature. In that third section down shows cash flows from capital and related financing activities. We can see that the city paid down about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of principal and interest on its long-term debt. And then there was another eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars invested in long-term assets, in the infrastructure and in the water and sewer fund. So altogether, one point six million dollars was consumed by the one by the water and sewer fund for those long-term investment-type activities. Altogether, there was a decrease in cash in the water and sewer fund. It's about two-thirds of the way down, we can see there was a decrease of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. But again, some years, there's there's increases, other years, there's decreases, just really depends on what the how much infrastructure was expended during a a given year. If we skip ahead now, all the way to page seventy-eight, we get into the required supplemental information of the auto report. I did want to spend a little bit of time looking at the the pension schedules. So this is now the sixth or seventh year that the city has been reporting the its net pension liability and its related schedules in in the back end of the auto report. It still seems like a new standard, but in reality, we're we're now seven years into this. I did want to point out that in two thousand twenty, in the police and fire fund, now we have slightly different years, because when we get to MERS, we'll see two thousand nineteen, and it looks like a typo. But really, the police and fire has an actuarial valuation performed on June thirty of each year. So it's dated June thirty, two thousand twenty. Here, we can see that four rows down in the two thousand twenty column, there were changes in assumptions. These were assumptions that were required to be adopted by the city in its actuarial evaluation to meet the uniform assumptions published annually by Treasury. By following those assumptions, that led to an increase in the net pension or the total pension liability of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then if you look about six or seven more rows down, you can see that during the year, there was net investment income of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. City expects to get around seven percent rate of return on its pension assets. It was a little bit less than what we would like to see. But we know that really, twenty twenty and and even the fourth quarter of of two thousand nineteen had less than expected market returns in 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 mutual funds and in in the stock market. That in turn led to less than expected returns. Some years, it's up, other years, it's down, there's some ebb and flow to that. But altogether, if you look at the planned fiduciary net position, which is three rows up from the bottom, the city is still at seventy-seven point six percent funded. So even with an increase in in the assumptions, increasing the total pension liability for the police and fire by five hundred and thirty-four thousand, less less returns than expected on on pension assets. You guys are still about seventeen, eighteen points better than what Treasury expect local units to have in terms of a funding percentage. Treasury has a minimum level expectation of sixty percent, you guys are at seventy-seven point six percent. So very much compliant with Treasury's standards in terms of of funding your police and fire pension liability. Hopefully, we start seeing some better returns, and that certainly will help pull that number back up. Ultimately, over the course of the next nineteen years, that number is going to become fully funded as long as the city keeps on, which it has been, continues to make its its annual required contribution set forth by by the actuary. If we skip ahead now to page eighty-one. Here we see the exact same schedule for the MERS pension plan. And again, I I mentioned, this looks like a typo, it says two thousand nineteen in the first column. That's because of the MERS actuarial valuation is performed for all local units of government in the state of Michigan as of December thirty-first each year. So we're using the December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen valuation on the city's June thirty, two thousand twenty auto report. What I wanted to point out here is we have another change in assumptions. Four rows, five rows down from the bottom in the two thousand nineteen column. The change in assumptions increased the total pension liability by four hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And that's because the the MERS actuarial board, or I'm sorry, the MERS Retirement Board determined that eight percent long-term rate of return was a little bit on the high side. They felt that seven point six percent was a better representation of the economic reality of what those long-term returns were going to be. Thus, they decreased the rate of return by point four percent. That is what increased the the total pension liability of the city during two thousand nineteen. So we knew about this, the the Retirement Board mentioned this two, three years ago, they published a memorandum to all local units. So it came to fruition on the two thousand nineteen valuation. However, if you look about two-thirds of the way down, we can see that there was a total investment income of one point two six million dollars. And again, this is based as of for the twelve months ended, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And altogether, calendar year two thousand nineteen yielded about a fourteen percent rate of return on all of the MERS investment, MERS pension investments. So the city expected a rate of return of seven point six percent. The actual return came at fourteen percent, very much better than expected. And if you compare that to two thousand eighteen, you can see in two thousand eighteen, there was actually a loss of about three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. So very significant swing in a positive direction. And then if you look, three rows up from the bottom in the two thousand nineteen column, the city's funded percentage increased up to seventy-four point one percent, up from seventy-one point six percent one year prior. So even with a four hundred and seven thousand dollar one-time adjustment to the total pension liability because of that reduced long-term rate of return, the city still experienced about a two and a half percent increase in its funding percentage. And again, fourteen points better than what Treasury is expecting local units to 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 be funded at. So very much on track, very much compliant with the the requirements set forth by by Treasury. And then the last page I wanted to point out, if you flip two more pages to page eighty-three. This is now the fourth year that's the city has complied with the new retiree healthcare reporting standards. We see the exact same schedule, it's just these standards aren't quite as new or or as old as the the pension reporting standards. Here, we see another change in assumptions in the two thousand twenty column. And again, the retiree healthcare valuation is performed annually on the city's fiscal year-end. So we get back to the two thousand twenty column designation. A three hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollar decrease in the total retiree healthcare liability as as a result of change in assumptions. This again is because the city is following the uniform assumptions published by Treasury on an annual basis, and it actually benefited the city and reduced the the total liability by three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And then we see that there was actually a net investment loss, obviously, different different makeup in terms of what was included in in the pension assets. For the twelve months ended June thirty, two thousand twenty, there was a decrease in 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 total pension assets. I'm sorry, total retiree healthcare assets. Altogether, the total liability, the funding percentage increased up to seventy-eight point one percent. You can see that three rows up from the bottom compared to seventy-six percent in two thousand nineteen. So it still went up by about two percent, very much compliant. Treasury expects local units to be at thirty-five percent funded. You guys are about forty-three points better than what Treasury expects local units to be at. So very healthy, much better off than than most local units are in terms of funding that retiree healthcare liability. In terms of highlights, that's that's what I've gotten. I'm certainly happy to take any any further questions that the council might have.
Well, it sounds like you did a great job presenting, because there aren't any questions at all. So congratulations again on a on a great report this year, Owen and staff.
Thank you, thank you, Joe.
Yep, yep, glad to be here.
Mayor, back to you.
Back to me. Okay, I'm not on mute. So the next thing on our agenda this evening is that we have a couple of appointments. Sandy, would you like to introduce those?
Sure, it's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Jim Walker to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Councilmember Shippers, I'll make a motion to reappoint Jim Walker to a two-year term on the Board of Review to expire February twenty-second. Wait a second.
Ellen Boss will second that.
You had the correct date, T.I.
Yeah, yeah, twenty twenty-one, really?
Twenty twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-three on my thing, it says twenty-one, okay, twenty-three.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Jim Clements to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Jim Clements to the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority for a two-year term to expire on February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Ellen Boss?
Shippers supports.
Councilmember Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Oh, next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Very brief report this evening, just the COVID-nineteen update. And just wanted to remind members of council and the public to visit our regional health department website, There is the landing page, it'll take you to everything related to the virus and the vaccine. And from there, you can get access also to all of the most up-to-date state health department orders and restrictions. And lastly, just want to encourage people that if you are going to go out and once again, enjoy in-person dining, that is now available effective today per the the health orders. So please be careful and as respectful as you can with others that are in your area with respect to maintaining social distancing requirements and masks and and things of the like. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And this evening, we do have a couple of resolutions that we need to approve, adopt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first one is with respect to a a resolution that will tentatively award two construction contracts regarding water system improvements. This is with respect to the construction of our new well field project. It is being recommended this evening to tentatively award two construction contracts for water system improvements that will also include a six percent contingency to be added to each contract award that'll cover field-level changes and project requirements. This is all built into the amount that has been previously approved through the project application through the state drinking water revolving fund. Once we have all of the financial arrangements in place and with the funding, construction costs are then funded through the loan. As you'll see in the in the packet this evening, we did provide a lot of the details and a lot of the informations with respect to it. Owen or Jeff, would you like to add any finer points to the recommendation this evening? Because there were, there were several bids that were received. We are recommending what I believe is the the lowest bid on both on both of them.
I would just add that it's tentative only because we haven't closed on the loan financing. So it's it's it is solid as long as that that closing takes place.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to tentatively award the two construction contracts for water system improvements and to approve a six percent contingency be added to each contract award for field changes and project requirements.
Ellen Boss will second that.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item on the agenda is a request to to adopt a resolution that'll approve an amendment to the restated amended agreement that established the Joint Cadillac Wexford County Airport Authority. I apologize in advance if I butcher his name, but our airport manager, Steve Bajalski, reached out to me a little while ago, inquiring with respect to the process of adjusting the per diem for airport authority board members. I advised that I'd reach out to Janet Cook, our county administrator, to also put her on notice that the airport per diem is established through the original agreement that established the authority, I believe, some forty years ago. The requirement then would essentially be to amend that agreement between the city and the county. And that's what we're here tonight to request the council to do. As you'll see within the within the packet, there's a request with respect to amending section three that pertains to the scheduled meeting per diems as follows. And the request is thirty-five dollars per diem, not to exceed five hundred and sixty dollars in any one calendar year. For officers, president, treasurer, and secretary would be to receive an additional five dollars per diem, not to exceed six hundred and forty dollars in any one calendar year. Also attached for reference purposes is a copy of the minutes from the airport board within the packet. And I do believe that this is going to be in front of the county later this month. Assuming that the city council considers to approve this request, it would then be contingent upon the county board also approving it on their side as well. And I'm not certain if Steve is on the line or not, he might be, but that is the update or the request.
Steve is on the line.
Okay. Okay. Steve, if you have anything to add, this would be a time to chime in.
Hello, guys. No, I do not have anything to add, but it's been a long time coming for these guys. I think it's a small increase that they're asking for, and I think the work that we've been doing is showing results, so I hope that we can gain your support. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, I think this is the first increase since perhaps 1981.
Well, this is councilmembers. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve amendment to restated amended agreement to establish Joint Cadillac Wexford County Airport Authority subject to approval by Wexford County.
This is King. I'll support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our final public comment this evening.
I am not seeing anybody with hands raised.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the good of the order if any of the council members or Marcus have anything that they would like to share.
Mayor, I have a couple of quick updates, if I may. First one is, it came to my attention that there'd been some public concerns raised regarding the status of the Ice Tree, which, if you haven't seen it yet, is off of Lake Street, just next to the utility substation that we have. I want to let the public know, council know, that that facility is monitored daily by the Utilities Department. The Ice Tree superstructure itself involves piping, chains, and other things to essentially hold the structure in place. Combined effort between Utilities and Public Works is also in play to salt and open up the sidewalk as best as possible, more so than what we normally do in other areas where we just use the sidewalk plow. We'll also be dropping some salt there as well to help combat the water spray. Certainly, if anyone has any questions or concerns, or if they see something that looks out of sorts with regard to the, to the display, feel free to contact the city, ask for the Utilities Department, 775-0181 will get you right into us, and then there'll be a code to press that'll ring our office. So that would be, that would be perfect. The second update I wanted to mention is, customarily, at the second meeting in February, I provide a State of the City update to city council. In years past, that update has been anywhere from, oh, I don't know, maybe 25 minutes on the short end, perhaps upwards of 40 minutes or so on the long end, but who's counting, right, everybody?
We are.
Yeah, you are? Okay. My thought was that, given how everything has been electronic as of late, that perhaps instead of providing a live update as a part of your agenda at the next meeting, rather, I work with the staff and produce a State of the City update video that we can link onto our website or social media site and certainly get out to council in that way, and then people can click the link and watch essentially the presentation at their leisure versus doing it as a part of a live, a live meeting. And I just wanted to make sure that before I sort of shift gears and work on that, that the council doesn't have a sort of negative knee-jerk reaction to me throwing that out there. And it would be my goal to still get it out this month in February. It may not be exactly by our next meeting date and time, but it'd certainly be this month, so.
Well, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to that. I think that, you know, we're doing so much more electronically that it probably would reach a lot more of our community if you were to do that video and put it out on our website.
Sounds good. Just, again, just wanted to make sure.
What does everyone else think?
Was it good?
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
In agreement with that, yeah. Okay.
It might be, like you said, even better than doing it the old way. We might reach more people, so.
Right. Yeah, so thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anyone else?
I wanted to give a shout-out both to Jeff and Marcus because I had received two calls and an email on the Ice Tree and got that information to Marcus, who got it to Jeff, who jumped on it right away to get the information out, and I really appreciate that. And I want to encourage people, don't ever hesitate to reach out to any of the council members on questions, or to Marcus directly, or to Jeff directly. A lot of times, people don't know who would answer the question. But when you do call us, we're able to get the information to the right people and then get the information back out to the public. So Jeff, thank you. Marcus, thank you. The Walkers will appreciate the salt on the sidewalk and those chains being firm so it doesn't tip over. That's perfect.
I'd like to echo Mayor Felkins' comments about the football team, everybody involved, coach, band, cheerleaders, everybody's hard work that went in to make this year happen. Very proud of you. You played a very tough team. And a special shout-out to a number 64 on that team that had a quarterback sack against Dearborn and young Mr. Swiger. Good job, kid. We look forward to seeing you people in the fall. Thank you all very much.
Mayor Felkins, can I make one comment?
Sure.
Actually, there are two of them. The first is, I inadvertently left off three digits from the link in the notice for the Zoom. The link actually was there, but it wasn't included in the link that you could just click on, so I apologize. The second comment I will make is, congratulations to your football team. I found myself with divided loyalties since my son plays for the Forest Hills Eastern Hawks. But I was in attendance at the game. It was a hard-fought battle, and the Cadillac Vikings came from behind to win it in the fourth quarter. It was a great game, and so congratulations.
Yeah, and let's not miss the fact that in the finals, they played their pants off with, against Country Day, and it was hugely respectable outcome in that game. So, yeah, they made history, and I think that it's a really bright spot in a really crazy year, so, yeah. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Have a good night. Stay healthy.